Yeah, we have to wait for it to come out, the TV. Okay, good evening. This is a public meeting of the Board of Education. A Clark Public Schools adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231, and a special notice was made in conformance with Section 13 of the Act.
Thank you. And with that, can we get a motion returned to public? I see Ms. Hickman and Mrs. Harrison.
All in favor?
Aye.
And at this point, can we all just rise for the pledge? Pledge of allegiance. And I please get a roll call.
Ms. Akalonis.
Here.
Mr. Bensavenga. Mr. Bohm. Mr. Brady.
Here.
Ms. Guerrero.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Ms. Hickman.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Smorl.
Here.
And Mr. Dunkersloot.
Here.
Have been eight board members. Where are the corners?
Thank you. And at this time, we'll hand it back to Mr. Or hand it to Mr. Grande and Mr. Vazuzo for the presentation of the annual school budget.
Welcome everyone to the 2025 budget presentation. All right, distinguished board members, Mr. Dunkersloot President, Mr. Lewis Vice President, Lorraine Akalonis, Dean Bensavenga, Scott Bohm, Robert Brady, Megan Harrison, Kristen Hickman, Robert Smorl, and the Garwood Rep, Ms. Christine Guerrero. I will now hand it over to Mr. Grande.
Thank you, Mr. Vazuzo.
Our mission statement guides us on an ongoing basis is Clark Township Public Schools will, in an active and responsible partnership with the community, provide a quality education that ensures all students achieve the New Jersey Student Learning Standards at all grade levels. Through a nurturing, relevant learning environment, we will assist in the development of productive, respectful, and accountable citizens who are lifelong learners. Our educational initiatives for the upcoming year that are funded through this budget include expansive programs from our kindergarteners, which we have been offering a full-day program for years now, where many of our neighboring districts are just getting on board with doing so, to having our students, as they leave ALJ, college-ready, and funding many of their AP and dual enrollment options. We will continue to aim for class sizes at a maximum in the very low twenties, along with our strong commitment to professional development, sending teachers and administrators to workshops and institutes during the summer months, along with sending people out during the school year and bringing consultants into district. This evening, we're approving under the Curriculum and Education section of the agenda a number of curriculum revisions, and we're thrilled to have no staff reductions in this budget. In fact, we're able to add one or two positions. And I say one or two depending on our needs when enrollments are finalized. Technology to supplement our one-to-one student Chromebook program across the district will be in place. For example, a subscription to the RAS Elementary Learning Site, Linkit for data warehousing and benchmarking, and we'll be piloting our benchmarking in grades three to 11 this spring before we leave. To complement the data that we get from Linkit, we'll have the iXL in support for students in Language Arts and Mathematics, along with most updated Three to Five Reading Wonders Elementary Literacy Program. And getting back to technology, the infrastructure to hold these programs will be continually evaluated and upgraded as needed. Thank you, Mr. Vazuzo.
All right, so as per pursuant to 6823-8.81, we are required as a public school district to have a balanced budget submitted to the county superintendent for their approval and to provide a thorough and efficient education. Components of a school budget, the general budget's comprised of Funds 10, 11, 12, 13, and 18. That's basically the engine that drives the budget. That's what a tax levy is allocated to. Special revenue's Fund 20, that's more like your grants, your Title I, Title II, IDEA, et cetera. Capital projects will be Fund 30 if we had a referendum, that's where we would, the money would go into Fund 30 and we'd draw it out from Fund 30. And debt service is Fund 40. That's the components of a school budget. Revenue for the operating budget for next school year is $43,745,000, which is comprised of $36 million with the tax levy, tuition 1.9, the tuition, that's the Garwood tuition with the send-receive relationship we have with Garwood. Our state aid is $3.1 million. Mr. Lane's 108, and our fund balance is 2.7. And actually, if you look at the budget, it only went up $5,000 from this current school year. And from a pie chart standpoint, you see tax levies 82 percent, tuition's five, state aid's seven. So we get very little state aid. You have some districts where that's the tax levy and the state aid is reversed, where they get 82 percent, and then the tax levy may only be 7 percent. So the bulk of our revenue does come from local taxes. Total revenue operating budget is $43 million, special revenue 2.2, our debt service aid was 1.8. Total budget for the 2425 school year is $47,894,275. Appropriations, broken down into your core components, we have total instruction $15 million, the special education is 4.3, added district tuitions 2.8, employee benefits is 7.5, transportation 3.1. Our support is $10 million, and capital outlay is 167 for total operating budget of $43,745,397. Total operations, again, appropriations rather, $43 million, operating budget, special revenue 2.2, and debt service 1.0 for total budget $47,784,275, which matches the revenue which we saw prior. So again, we have a balanced budget. We cannot submit a budget that's not balanced. It will not accept it. So we have to by law submit a balanced budget. Fixed costs, salaries 55 percent, benefits 17 percent, total salaries and benefits comprised of 72 percent of total budget, added district tuition 7 percent, and transportation 7, and planned operations security is 11 percent. So total fixed costs 97 percent. In previous years, our total fixed costs, if you remember, was maybe 90, 91 percent. Now it's shot up to 97 percent, which is a huge number. And we have very little flexibility. Even at 3 percent, you can, you can make the argument that, you know, we need supplies, we need textbooks. So it's a, even though it's discretionary cost, 3 percent of the total budget. Again, the operating budget, you'll see salary and benefits kind of eats up the entire pie. Tuition, transportation, planned operations, another 3 percent. Our fixed costs, as you can see, it kind of eats up the entire, the entire pie, taking up 97 percent. So we don't have much wiggle room with these budgets. Not just us, it's all the districts here in New Jersey. We're just getting killed with transportation cost. Years ago, it used to be the benefits. There was a big talk about the health benefits, driving, everything. Now, transportation has taken over the health benefits portion of driving the budget. We're trying to get some relief from the state. We'll see what happens. Publes on roll. We have a three-year, 101522s are actual, 101323s are actual. We're projecting for 2425. Total students on roll would be 2,041. Going to private school of 15, special ed, special ed to other districts of eight, and receiving from high school, which is Garwood, 124 students. And projected Garwood students, we have here in grade nine, 26 regular ed, two for resource, grade 10, 34, and seven, grade 11, 22, and seven, grade 12, 19, and five, and shared time is one and two. Shared time means they spend time here at the high school, and they also go to the vote tech, whether the morning or the afternoon. So that those are classified as shared time students for 124 students. Share service with the township. The township does a great job with us. They, they support us in many, many ways. Snow removal, few, leaf pickup, groundskeeping, recycling, recreation programs. We also share with Union County at Service, share bus routes. We do a lot of cooperative purchasing with that data, the Educational Service Commission in New Jersey, et cetera, et cetera. Now, our projected school tax for 2425 is a projected $131 increase in the school tax based on average home assessment of $524,967. And at this point, we'd like to thank everyone, especially the board for the support, Mr. Grande, for his support, all the principals and all the supervisors for their tremendous support over the years and the tremendous cooperation and help us to build this budget. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
So at this time, we'll open the floor to the public for questions about the school budget only after this brief intermission. So if there's any questions about the school budget and the school budget only, now would be the time to come up and discuss it. Seeing none, we'll move on to getting a motion to pass the school budget, 2425 budget. Can I get a motion? I see Mr. Smorl, followed by Ms. Hickman. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Akalonis. Mr. Brady.
Abstain.
This is minutes? No, this is the budget.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Mr. Brady abstaining?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Sorry. He was on minutes. He was confused.
Ms. Guerrero?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Mrs. Smorl?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
So at this time, can I get a motion for the approval of minutes? I see Ms. Harrison, followed by Ms. Akalonis. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
I'll abstain this time.
Ms. Guerrero?
Abstain.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorl?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. So now, at this time, we'll open the floor to the public for any comments or questions about agenda items only. So if there's anything on the agenda specifically that you'd like to talk about, now would be the time. At the end, we'll talk about non-public, or I'm sorry, non-agenda items. So seeing nothing for the agenda, right? Okay. So seeing nothing for agenda questions, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and we'll move to personnel items one through 15. Can I get a motion? I see Ms. Akalonis, followed by Mr. Brady. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Abstain on two, 10, 13, and 14. Yes on the rest.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorl?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
All right. So on curriculum, we have items 16 and 17, and I just want to add the note to item 16 that the tools of the mind training is to include the grade-two teachers that, the grade-two teachers as well with no cost change to that item. So with that, can I get a motion on items 16 and 17? I see Ms. Harrison, followed by Ms. Akalonis. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Yes on 16, abstain on 17.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorl?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Policy, we have item 18. Can I get a motion? Item 18. Mr. Brady, followed by Ms. Hickman. Any questions or comments? Is it a roll call?
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorl?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
All right. Now we have board governance items 19 through 22. Can I get a motion? Ms. Guerrero, followed by Mr. Lewis. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorl?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Finally, we have finance items 23 through 44 and addenda, addenda number one. I see Mr. Smorl with a motion, and Mr. Brady second. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Abstain on 25 and 27. Yes on the rest, including addendum.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Abstain on the addendum and yes on the rest.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorl?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkersloot?
Yes.
Motion carried?
All right. So at this point, we'll hand it over to Mr. Grande for the report, the superintendent.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Dunkersloot. Thank you, Mr. Vazuzo, for the budget preparation and for leading us through the process in such tight economic times outside of the school district, just in the state and the country in general. Many thanks to the Finance Committee led by Mr. Smorl, Mr. Bohm, and Mr. Brady as members, the full board, and our administrators. The process even funnels down to our staff in the sense that they submit their wish lists that we try to accommodate. And the presentation will be on the district website later this evening. On this evening's agenda, we had our reappointment lists of our certificated and non-certificated staff, and we are thankful to our faculty and staff for all that they do for our students. Tomorrow is Teacher Appreciation Day, and we're so very fortunate to have the staff that we have here in the Clark schools. We also approved our curriculum writers for this upcoming summer, along with our summer reading lists for grades K to 12. We're thrilled to be accepting three donations. Acme gift cards totaling $3,200 on behalf of Acme Markets Foundation's Nourishing Neighbors Program and Gen Youth. Each school received 32 gift cards valued at $25 each to be used at Acme Markets for school-related purchases, a very generous donation. Secondly, a check in the amount of $1,000 donated by P&amp;J Fuel Incorporated under the ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program for use by ALJ STEM programs. And lastly, $10,000 from Clark Recreation Wrestling towards the purchase of a wrestling mat for ALJ. And lastly, our Wellness Policy Annual School Progress Report. Our schools across the district are in compliance with the Wellness Policy nutrient standards for meals and other foods, number 8505, and they have made progress towards attaining the policy goals. There are no recommended changes or an action plan for next year's implementation of the policy. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Grande. At this time, we'll open it up to the committees for any reports. Any reports to the committee? Seeing none, any unfinished or new business that would like to be discussed? Seeing none, we're going to pass it over to Abigail.
Hi. Thank you, and good evening. I'll begin with events at the high school. This morning, AP testing begun with Advanced Placement Government and Politics taking place this morning. Everything ran smoothly and a calm week ahead for those testing. Additionally, NJSLA testing has begun and will continue through tomorrow. In May, the Director of School Counseling, Mr. Amendola, will be holding an event to speak with parents about preparing for college. AP testing will continue through next week. Beyond this, the sports teams continue to perform well with the lacrosse, golf, baseball, and softball seasons well underway. Looking to the middle school, the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony is Thursday, May 9, and on May 15, the Cum Science Olympia team will be attending the Clean Ocean Summit at Sandy Hook. The day after, on May 16, 40 Cum students will be attending the Teen Arts Festival to show off the skills they've developed over the year. Finally, the fourth marking period report cards will be posted around May 15. At Valley, the Brain Alliance Assembly was held, and students learned about bicycle safety. Banbonanza was held at ALJ, and the VRS Variety Show was held as well. Take Your Child to Work Day had a lot of students visiting their parents' jobs, and some of the staff's children visited the school. May is a busy month ahead with state testing, but some fun events are planned like field trips for the kindergartners in grades one, four, and five. Elafante music comes in in May to distribute the, to demonstrate the various instruments that their graders can play next year. The Robotics Club at Valley continues, and the PTA plant sale will be held in time for Mother's Day. Moving on to events at Henley, April was a busy month with assemblies on bike safety for grades one through four presented by the Brain Alliance. The Garden Club landscaped for Arbor Day by planting flowers and preparing the kindergarten garden for the preschoolers to help later in May. Career Day took place with kids from kindergarten and second grade, from kindergarten to second grade, where the students visited community establishments, and grades three through five rotated through sessions about careers presented by family and friends of Henley students and staff. Looking forward to May, most classes will have their annual class trip, and third graders will begin a battle of the books, along with being introduced to the instrument program available to them in fourth grade. The NJSLA has begun for grades three through five, and a kindergarten orientation will be held on Thursday, May 30 for those registered for the fall.
Thank you, Abigail.
Yeah, I want to take this moment. Abigail, our next meeting is June 17. You're going to be graduating the 19th. On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to thank you for your services, for how you articulated each meeting well, and I do believe you're going to Wood College.
I'm going to be attending Georgetown University in the fall.
To the public, that was not on the agenda. You have three minutes per discussion. If you'd like to speak, come up to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Bill Draghi, for Coast Duro, Clark, New Jersey. Well, it seems like President Biden has made all the states just like Jersey. Well, not until August 1, with his Title IX Department of Education changes. He's always talking about other politicians becoming dictators like Trump. But if this is not a dictatorial rule, he didn't get any advice from the Senate or Congress or anything. He goes and puts Title IX in, changing discrimination on sex, bringing in LGBTQ plus things just like Jersey has. Well, it makes sense because he's just like Murphy, a Democrat. And so now it's not going to be just Jersey and California and a couple of other Democrat states, but all the states on August 1. There are certain groups like Moms for Liberty that are very concerned about this because they have helped other states get out of the LGBTQ requirements, and they're worried that this is going to stop these states also. It's going to just make every state like, like Jersey and California. And they put a lot of work into protecting moms, protecting a parent's rights, and they're very worried about this. Because basically, it's making, it's really taking Governor Murphy's laws and putting it into effect in every state, starting August 1. So not letting, not letting parents have control over their children, and secretively, a child can maybe be taking hormones and sex-changing drugs and stuff, and even mastectomies without the knowledge of this, of the parents. Probably that would be very rare because I'm sure it would get out somehow to the parents. But that's, that's, that's the law that he wants to put into effect again to all the states, President Biden. But there is still hope on the horizon because in Idaho, actually, before the last meeting, I meant to bring this up, Idaho came out with a rule that says no healthcare can be given to any minor, under 18, dealing with any transsexual changes. And if they do, they could have a 10-year imprisonment for doing anything like hormones and puberty.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you. So if anybody else would like have something to say, please step up, state your name and your address for the record. You have three minutes per topic and cannot come up again until everybody else has a chance to speak.
Hi, I'm Edie Bloom, 46 Jupiter Street. Good evening, Board of, members of the Board of Education. I stand before you today with several other parents, as well as students from both Johnson and from the Cumf Middle School, advocating that the girls gymnastics team be reinstated for the upcoming 2024 fall competitive season at Johnson. Our understanding there was a team several years ago with dedicated gymnasts eager to showcase their talent, backed by two committed coaches and a well-equipped training facility. We believe we have the essentials ready to get ready to get started again in the fall. Those two committed coaches that I've mentioned are former graduates of Johnson, and they both had competed on the gymnastics team. We've also been in touch with Surgeon's Elite Gymnastics located in Westfield, New Jersey for the use of their facilities for practices. While we are aware that the budget has been set or predetermined for the next academic year, we have considered some of what are those costs would be. We expect these costs to be relatively modest, include the salary for the coaches, meet fees, and a monthly insurance fee to Surgeon's Elite. The plan is, we would also look to fundraise to help offset some of those costs. We do want to also mention that there are, for the academic school year of 2025 to 2026, we are aware there are a fair number of children coming up from the middle school, so that at least the program would look to continue further than just this one, this one upcoming year. So we do appreciate your time and consideration and helping us pave the way for the future of our kids and our dedicated athletes. Thank you.
Hi. Have you discussed this proposal with the athletic director?
With who? I'm sorry.
The ALJ Athletic Director, Gus Kalikas?
Yes. The, the ladies that are here tonight, they did go to see Mr. Kalikas about this, yes.
Yeah. How many, how many students do you have that are in the high school that plan to?
Approximately, right now, it's 10.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say we, we tried this two years ago, right?
Yeah, Gina and I.
And we, and we had, and I, and I looked at the list, right? Because I knew a lot of the girls, and they were definitely qualified gymnasts. And then when Family ID opened, it was like two signed up, right? So it's not, it's not the lack of willingness to have the program. It's more just, we need to, the numbers. to, the numbers to support it. And if we do, we're, you know, certainly, Mr. Kalikas and I will meet along with the athletic committee to figure out a way to get it going. So hot-button issue for Mr. Lewis, he doesn't love fundraising for, for sports, so we, we would certainly look into the athletic budget to, to cover what we should be covering for the program, right? I mean, obviously with, you know, the laws in New Jersey, they try to keep, where the, where the interest exists, they try to keep the male sports and female sports equal in terms of number of programs, so that's something we consider as well, right? So not having a program isn't really a good thing for us, we, we would like to have a program. So what I'll say is, I don't, I don't know if he opened Family ID for the fall yet, but if, when it opens, what I would recommend is to enroll right away, because that will give us time to, and I know he has some ideas already too, and it sounds like you have some great ideas in terms of getting it back up and running, but we've spoken about it as well, and it's definitely on our minds, so we need, we just need that enrollment to really talk further about it, right?
Great.
So you can always walk two doors down and ask too. Thank you.
I, I just want to, you know, piggyback on what Bob said. There's eleven schools in Union County that have gymnastics, okay? Being, it's a late date, one of the strong considerations to discuss with Mr. Kalikas is a co-op. Bob had talked about the quasi-collapse of it. There is co-op programs in the county because the numbers have been dwindling, but it's still a very competitive tournament. They have all their tournaments, Cranford, Scotch Plains, you're sure you know the tour. But that's something really that you really have to get in a, the so-called master schedule because lacrosse, I mean, gymnastics, where, where a lot of it is invitationals, which you know. So I would, I would talk to Mr. Kalikas because obviously, it, you know, we had gymnastics, we had it, and once upon a time, it was very vibrant, and it really kind of died off along the way. So it's something that really, to look into that part of it, because you're not going to really have a program in September to go into the county more of a co-op. If you have a feeder system with Comf, gymnastics is coming through as well. So I think that meeting would be good with the athletic director to see what he could possibly do for the girls for the fall, because it's obviously a few months away.
Anybody else? Okay, so seeing no more comments from the public, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and at this point, can I get a motion for adjourned? Ms. Acolonis, Ms. Guerrero, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.